Good evening. My name is Aisha Yakubamud and I am the Director of the Asian American Advocacy Fund. We are a social welfare organization dedicated to building a politically conscious, engaged, and progressive Asian American base in Georgia. Through a combination of policy advocacy at local, state, and federal levels, and by supporting candidates that believe in our values, we fight to create a better Georgia for us all. I want to take a moment to acknowledge all of our partners who have helped put this event together. Thank you to the New Georgia Project Action Fund, the Galeo Impact Fund, Georgia Equality, and the Working Families Party for being such great partners for this event and for helping to put on this virtual forum. Gwinnett County is home to immigrants from all over the world. We are especially proud that Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, and Native Hawaiians make up nearly 12% of the county's growing population. As you all may know, your local county commission has incredible influence over your day-to-day lives. Today, our Gwinnett Board of Commissioners is made up of four commissioners elected by their own district, as well as one chairman who was elected countywide. Together, this five-member board makes decisions about the nuts and bolts of what goes on in your neighborhood, including things like transit and transportation, planning and zoning, or access to resources for underserved communities. We're excited that you're here for this important conversation to hear from these candidates about their visions for the future of Gwinnett County. Now, without further delay, I'd like to introduce you to our moderator for tonight's forum, Kurt Yielman with the Gwinnett Daily Post. Kurt has years of experience covering Gwinnett politics and news, and we're grateful to have him here with us this evening. Welcome, Kurt.
Welcome, Aisha, and welcome to our panel this evening, as well as to our candidates for participating. We have five candidates, all Democrats, who are joining us tonight. And as I introduce you, I'm going to ask that you turn your camera on. First, we have Nicole Love Hendrickson. Hello, Nicole. Next, we have Andy Morgan. How are you doing, Andy? Next, we have Nesmond Nemhard. How are you doing this evening, Desmond? Next, we have Kurt Thompson. How are you doing this evening, Kurt? And finally, we have Lee Thompson Jr. Welcome, Lee. So, tonight's format is each candidate will have received instructions on how this forum works in advance. But for members of the audience, here are things are going to work. The candidates will have three minutes for each of their opening statements. The moderator will then ask questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. Our team will be working to keep time and letting candidates know when they are running low on time. If needed, I will let candidates know gently when their time is up and need to finish their sentence. There will only be follow-up if the moderator elects to have a follow-up question. Finally, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. Unfortunately, we may not have time for questions from the audience, but I encourage all our viewers on Facebook to ask questions of the candidates and allow them the opportunity to respond after the forum has completed. Candidates, be sure to check back through the comments for any questions that have been directed to you during the broadcast. As Aisha pointed out, this is an important seat that is on the Gray County Commission. It is an open seat this year with Charlotte Nash's decision to not seek reelection. In fact, we have three open seats on the county commission this year. And any one of those seats flipping to Democrats would shift control of the county commission to the Democrats. So, this is a very important election this year for everyone in Gwinnett County. And without further ado, we will get to opening remarks from our candidates. Candidates, please introduce yourselves and your platform. And you each have three minutes. And we will start with Nicole Love Hendrickson.
Hello, and I want to thank the Asian American Advocacy Fund and all of the partners for hosting tonight's forum. My name is Nicole Love Hendrickson, and I am running to be the next Gwinnett County Commission Chair. Before I begin introducing myself, I do want to share that I have a heavy heart today, this evening, because of the racial violence that has been happening in Georgia and just learned of another one that happened in Indianapolis. And I can't begin to express my sadness and my outrage as a mom who is raising a black son in the state of Georgia and beyond. And I know there are other mothers out there who can resonate and empathize with this. We are very fearful for the lives of our sons and how leaders continuously turn a blind eye to racial systemic and social injustices. And now more than ever, it is incredibly important that you get out and vote because we need leaders that are not going to turn a blind eye. We need leaders that are not going to be complicit in social and racial injustices. And so, I'm asking all of you to please get out and vote because our black men, their lives are depending on it. My son's life is depending on it. Our son's lives are depending on it. So, please get out and vote. So, a little bit about me, I am a social worker. I have a social work background. And for several years in Gwinnett County, I've worked for a nonprofit organization that has been on the front lines addressing issues such as poverty, homelessness, food insecurity, in areas that have been impacting our indigent communities. I've also had the pleasure of serving as a Division Director for Gwinnett County Board of Commissioners and bridging the community and underrepresented communities with our local government, as well as creating opportunities to build a sense of place and a sense of community right here in Gwinnett County. I have founded programs such as the Gwinnett 101 Citizens Academy that educates residents about local government. I've also founded the Gwinnett Youth Commission to engage our youth and empower them to be part of the process and involved in public processes. I've also served on the Gwinnett Chamber Board of Directors. I also was on the founding board for the Gwinnett Young Professionals Board and founding the Gwinnett Youth Leadership Institute. And all of those are in an effort to ensure that we support small businesses as well as disadvantaged businesses. I believe in Gwinnett of the future. I believe that our strength is our diversity. And we have yet to harness that diversity. And as your chair, I look forward to ensuring that everybody has an equal playing field and that we ensure access to equity, opportunity, and inclusion for all.
Nicole, next will be Andy Morgan.
Good evening. Thank you to your sponsors for this event, for organizing the event, providing this opportunity for us to share our view and vision for this county. Before I start, I'd like to first echo the words of Nicole. I think that what's happened in Brunswick is a travesty, and it's something that definitely needs to be addressed as far as what's happening to young black males in this community. And so, as Gwinnett County Commission Chair, I would want to make sure that our policing and the way that we approach the situation to deal with our young men is a way that's fair, equitable, and addresses their concerns going forward. Now, as I mentioned, my name is Andy Morgan. You might ask who I am. I'm a father. I'm a father of a bright young man who makes me proud every day. I'm a son of two wonderful parents who immigrated here from Jamaica and instilled me values that have served as guideposts throughout my life. I'm also an immigrant, having been born in Jamaica and came to the United States at the age of four. I'm a military veteran who served this country. I'm someone who has called Gwinnett County my home since 2007. I have professional degrees in electrical engineering and law. I'm a business attorney with almost 25 years of experience and licensed to practice law in New York and Georgia. My law office has been in Lawrenceville since 2008. I'm also a public servant, committed to the integrity of elections, having worked as an area manager for five years in Gwinnett County elections. Committed to the development of affordable housing, having served on the Board of Gwinnett County Habitat for five years. Committed to driving entrepreneurship and job growth, having hosted through our nonprofit and having participated through SCORE, Gwinnett Chamber, and other organizations and forums intended to educate business owners and entrepreneurs. I'm committed to our youth, having served several seasons as youth soccer coach, served on high school advisory boards, taught introductory law class in high schools to high school students, participated in numerous career fairs, mock interviews, and Shark Tank events. I'm also committed to my community, having served on several occasions as president of homeowners associations. But I want to be clear about one thing that I'm not. I'm not a politician. I'm also not running to become a politician. I'm running for the purpose of continuing to be of service to my community in the best way that I could think of. The operation of our local government has the most impact on the lives of our residents. No position is more impactful than driving positive change than a person who serves in the position of Gwinnett County Commission Chair. That is why I'm running. My name is Andy Morgan. I'm asking for your vote. I want to serve as your next county commission chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And next, we'll have Desmond Nemhard. Desmond, can you hear me?
Okay, there you are. I couldn't hear you at first. Okay, yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Desmond Nemhard. And just like Andy and Nicole, I'd like to echo the same sentiments regarding what is going on with the killing of young black men in our community and in our country overall. Hopefully, this is something that will be addressed because people are starting to lose faith. People have already lost faith in the system. So, with our new batch of leaders in Gwinnett County, I hope we elect, we get all ten votes so we can elect the right people who can address this issue. Regarding me, as I said, my name is Desmond Nemhard. I came to this country at the age of 18 in 1990, 30 years ago in April. Like many of our immigrants here, I came on a visa and decided not to go back. So, I entered legally and decided not to go back and sort my papers out. From there, I move on. I went, I attend college, started working at Dunkin' Donuts. That was my very first job ever. Then, I went to college, community college, then four-year college, where I earned an associate degree and a bachelor degree in economics, respectively. I moved to Gwinnett County in 2008. I've been here since then, from New Jersey. Started a business, started a restaurant here in Gwinnett County. Went through the recession and throughout that all, I made it, and I'm still here to date. I'm running for county commissioner in Gwinnett County because I have a passion for this county. It's my home. I would love, what I want to do is to make sure that our small businesses are protected in Gwinnett County because that small businesses are the root or the engine of our economy here in Gwinnett County. I want to make sure we have proper infrastructure and transportation here in the county to improve job creation, create an all-inclusive government in Gwinnett County because we are so diverse here. And also to create a platform to make sure that we have, we address the housing issue, the homeless issue in Gwinnett County. Again, I am running because of the passion I have for this county, the passion I have for my home. I'm not a politician here. Again, also, I don't want to be a politician. I am a businessman who want to see nothing but the best for our county and our people. Thank you.
Desmond, and next we will have Kurt Thompson.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kurt Thompson, and I too join in thanking the Asian American Advocacy Fund and the other sponsors, Galeo and Georgia Equality for hosting this. And also, you know, join in calling for justice in Glen County. As someone whose grandfather died as a victim of gun violence, and actually, my great-great-grandfather was lynched in Brunswick, Georgia, where this very act happened. So, I'm well aware that sometimes in the South, the past isn't even, isn't over. It isn't even past sometimes. And I do hope that justice is done, that a grand jury is impaneled, and that those that have done this are brought to justice and that we can move forward at some point. I'm running for Gwinnett County Commission Chair. I'm from here. I grew up here. I started at Camp Creek Elementary. I played ball at Mountain Park. I swam in Norris Lake. I graduated from Shiloh High School. I know this community well. I currently live in Norcross. My family didn't always have the best of times. We had to deal with my father's addiction issues, and we lost a family member to the AIDS pandemic. I went on and became a lawyer, a progressive community leader, serving on the Board of Norcross Cooperative Ministry, Gwinnett Habitat for Humanity, and the Aid Gwinnett, which is now Positive Impact, before becoming a state legislator, where I served 16 years, rising to be on the Appropriations Committee, where I served 12 years, 10 years, helped found a CID in the Gwinnett Village area, now Gateway 85, and helped get the statute passed that allowed for CIDs in Gwinnett County. I served on the Rules Committee and became a committee chair. And during that entire time, during the two decades that I've been here fighting for folks in Gwinnett County, this is basically just a continuation of that. I hope that you will honor me with your vote, and I promise you, if you do that, I will continue fighting for you in the county commission, just like I fought for voting rights and healthcare in Atlanta and the legislature. And I will continue that fight, and I'm asking for your votes so that I can do that.
Thank you, Kurt. And finally, we will have Lee Thompson.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the Asian American Advocacy Fund and the other hosts for letting us have this opportunity tonight. In this unusual time of campaigning, this is a great opportunity for us to be able to reach out and get our message to the voters. And of course, as we all join in, Nicole, thank her for her comments about seeking justice in this terrible situation and also seeking racial justice in this state and this county. And that begins with leadership and with good leadership. I decided to run for this position last year for three reasons. I decided to run because I thought I had the experience and the knowledge to be able to do this job and do it well. I decided, secondly, because I had spent a career working in local government, and I understand how local government affects our daily lives every day. And it's the closest government to us, and it has an effect each day on our lives. And I chose number three because I'm a Democrat. And I've spent over 40 years working to elect Democrats and to push forward progressive democratic ideas and values. And I believe I have the experience and knowledge to bring progressive democratic values and ideas to the Gwinnett County government. When I decided to run, I knew that the county was going to be facing challenges. We're a rapidly developing county. We have issues we need to address in transportation, in affordable housing, in land use and redevelopment, in voting rights. And now, in the last few months, we have even additional challenges because we're going to have an economic downturn from the virus, and we're going to have to deal with providing services with less resources. The next chair is going to have to be a person who understands local government. They're going to have to be a person that understands how to deal with providing services with less resources by making sure we don't impact those who have already been the most impacted by this virus and the economic downturn. I believe I have that expertise. I would ask you to check us all out. You can go to my website at leeforgwinnett.com. There, you can read about my experience of approximately 40 years as a local government attorney. You can read of my service in Leadership Gwinnett, my service as a mediator, my service as a state representative, and my service to my church and my community. As you read about those things, check out who we are and what our history is. Don't just listen to the answers of our questions, but actually check out who we are and what we have stood for and where we've stood during our service and our careers. I believe if you do that, that you will go down to the bottom and to the last name on this Democratic ballot and vote for Lee Thompson. And I appreciate and ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. We will now switch to our questions for this evening. We got a little different from the introductions in that candidates will only have two minutes to respond to these questions. We will start with the first question, which is, "What are your views on the county's response to the COVID-19 pandemic? What would you have done differently to protect residents of Gwinnett County? How will you help the county recover from the aftermath of this unprecedented crisis?" Again, you will have two minutes each to respond, and we will begin with Andy Morgan.
Thank you for the question. Oops, on mute. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you for the question. Sorry about that. As far as the response from the county, first, I'd like to commend the county for working with the local cities in order to put in place the lockdown. Clearly, that affected us by protecting us from the continued advance of the coronavirus and slowed the spread. However, you know, I don't want to second-guess what has happened because I think they've done a good job. But what I would have probably changed as far as the process would be communicate better with the residents. Not everyone has access to Gwinnett or to the website to keep track of what's going on. I think it would have been important, especially in a situation of crisis, that the leadership of the county steps forward and either calls a press release or something that will have wider exposure so that folks can get access to information on a broader basis. I think also to extend, there's something major affecting all the residents. We should have sent out some sort of communication to the residents to inform them what's happening, what the change of status is, so that they know where to get the information. So, I think it would have been helpful to send out a mailer. Snail mail still helps and still works for those who don't, who are not connected to the internet and who are not keeping track of all the political activity, and so they can find out what's going on, what's happening with the county, and what should be happening next. As far as things that we can do and probably should already be doing is that we should be setting up different task forces right now to try to address situations we know it's going to be coming forward. Addressing situations without budget, to start to plan what's going to happen going forward and make adjustments and predictions in terms of what's happening based on revenues, expenditures, and sales, and be prepared for it. The other thing I would say is that we have to try to figure out a way to assist our business owners to give them an opportunity to find ways in order to advance out of the situation and also deal with our residents to ensure that we can take care of those who are housing insecure as well as food insecure, so that they can go forward and hopefully weather situations as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And next, we will hear from Desmond.
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. Like Andy, I do agree that I like the way the county went about it. I commend them and how they approached the whole thing. Again, I share the same sentiment. I do think the communication was poor. They should have done better with that part of it. There was a lot of people wasn't sure. They see other cities or other parts of the state. There was continuous update, but we did not get that here in Gwinnett until at the last minute. As far as what I would have done better, I think the only thing I would have changed was the communication issue because that again was a serious problem. What we ought to do now is to focus on our budgeting because we're going to have some very serious revenue shortfall. Being a small business owner myself, I can tell you that I know the county is going to be, is being affected badly because of sales tax that they're not getting. I would hope, and what I would have done, is reach out to both the state and the federal government for funding for some kind of grants to help to plug this and in order to also assist our residents. I would also reach out, again, as a small business owner, reach out to our businesses because small businesses are the economic engine to this county. So, we have to reach out to one of our most partner, and that is our private sector, to see how we can recover and how fast we can recover from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Desmond. And next, we will hear from Kurt Thompson.
Okay, well, you know, I for one actually think that Gwinnett County acted a little slowly. We were one of the last folks to try and put in place a county shelter-in-place ordinance before the state preempted it. Now, once the county did act, I think they did a good job. It was a good ordinance, and I regret the fact that the state stepped in with a weaker ordinance and preempted everybody. And I think it's a shame also that the governor has continued the state of emergency but let his weaker shelter-in-place order expire so that he can basically continue to preempt counties and cities from doing what's in the best interest of their citizens. And I think that at some point, we have to address that going forward if things happen again, if there's a second wave. But, you know, right now, what I would suggest that we'd be doing is if I were in charge, I would make sure that we were doing a daily assessment of what the needs were in the county, contacting all the, whether it's coordinating with the cities, to contact every clinic, every food pantry, every co-op, all the elder care and senior communities to figure out what our daily needs are and to then try to work with the community to make sure that those needs are met as best as possible. We're the sixth largest, we have a population larger than six states. We may have to go out into the private sector to get some things done, to purchase tests, to purchase masks, to purchase PPE. We have an incredibly diverse community that we might be able to tap into to help actually manufacture some of that. And I think we need to be looking at that, and we need to be daily assessing that from a communication standpoint. You know, when the state basically dropped the ball on that, and the county should have continued with that. We have a public access cable station. We have, as other folks have pointed out, the ability to do snail mail. But definitely getting stuff daily out on cable would have probably been one of the better things. Going forward, we're going to have a huge budget problem, and I think we will probably need to shift to zero-based budgeting so that we can take a look at all of our priorities and make sure that every dollar is aligned, how we want it best spent, with public safety being the top priority, mass transit and planning being second, and then figuring out how to restart our business community. And then I think that I personally would want to use all of my abilities to lobby for federal funding and state funding to cover the shortfalls.
Sorry about that, Kurt. We ran out of time there, so. Next, we will hear from Lee Thompson.
Thank you. Well, I would say that the county, once it decided to put a shelter-in-place order into effect, did a good job, and I would give them some congratulations on that. When they decided to do that, rather than acting on their own, they coordinated with the 16 cities that are located in the Gwinnett County. And actually, as a city attorney for four of those, there was great coordination between them working on the emergency order that did go into effect. And I think that was a good plan because we made sure that the same thing that was happening in Norcross was happening in Lawrenceville, was happening in Snellville, was happening in unincorporated Gwinnett County. That was a positive thing. A negative was that the governor then stepped in with a less effective order and preempted the local governments. Has continued to preempt the local governments with less restrictive orders than I think probably should be in place at this time. Things that we could have done better would have been a little strategic planning. We have an emergency ordinance in effect that deals with things such as natural emergencies, such as earthquakes and tornadoes and such. But it really had not thought about or addressed a health crisis. And I think we can learn going forward that we need to do that, and we need to make sure that we have a plan as we go forward to deal with that and to make sure that we provide everything that's needed for our first responders. And we're also going to have to deal with the economic impact, obviously. We're going to have reduced sales tax, which is going to reduce the ability to fund some of our SPOSS projects. And we're going to have to do some excellent budget planning that ought to already be in the works as we look as to how much of a downturn we're going to have and how we're going to deal with that.
Lee, and next, we have Nicole.
So, I think what we learned is that the county's response to COVID was good in many ways. But what I've learned as chair is I would not wait for the state and the federal government to act. And I think we found ourselves, the county found itself looking up for guidance from the state and the federal government instead of just taking the reins. We have a population of a million people, and we should have acted fast. The county has an emergency management office that is led by Greg Swanson, and it amazes me that we have not heard from Greg this whole entire time. And there are emergency management plans in place, and the county did enact emergency management plans. But I think moving forward, I would have liked to confer with the emergency management director in getting guidance on what we need to do to protect our citizens and doing all that we can. And the moment that the state let its shelter-in-place order expire, the county should have stepped up and started communicating. We should still encourage our residents to... We should, we, we should still encourage our, our residents to wear masks, to social distance, to do all it takes to continue protecting our residents. We have a large majority minority community and COVID is hitting the minorities harder than any other community. And so we need to have had a rollout that was equitable in this instance. And also the county has a responsibility and obligation to protect all of its frontline workers, including our transit workers. I was able to procure a donation for our transit workers when they were pending a strike because they felt that they were not being protected in, in, in the current circumstance. And so I think that we need to do all that we can to protect not only our residents, but also our, our citizens and our workers. And of course, a, as I've said before, we are going to have to tighten up our budget. There are things that we can do and convene other folks around the table in a public-private partnership to address how we can come back from COVID-19. It's been done before, it can be done again.
Before our next question now, Georgia is one of only three states in the country without a state civil rights law. While federal law does protect some groups of people, it's expensive and time-consuming to pursue a federal lawsuit. You think Gwinnett County should join the list of local governments who are protecting folks from discrimination in housing, employment and public accommodations? If so, how would you accomplish this? If not, what are the barriers? You have each two minutes to respond and we will start with Desmond here.
Yes, I do think Gwinnett County should join. This is a situation where we, we have to protect all of our citizens. All Gwinetians should be protected overall. As far as housing is concerned, all Gwinetians should be protected. We should all be able to afford proper housing. Housing accommodation. There should be no discrimination whatsoever amongst any of us Gwinetians. Because we all support our budget, one way or the other. From our sales taxes to working here in Gwinnett, we all, we should all be protected.
Thank you, Desmond. And next we will hear from Kurt Thompson.
I've actually, you know, thanks for the question. It's actually been something that's been in my platform the entire time. You can go to KurtforGwinnett, that's Kurt F O R Gwinnett dot com and see it there. We have, I have long advocated that the county needs a non-discrimination ordinance. If cities as small as Doraville and as big as the city of Atlanta can have them, we can have one. And it needs to protect people regardless of their race, their color, their creed, sex, national origin, their nationality, their immigration status, and whether or not they're in the LGBT community. We absolutely need that. And I think that, you know, the, one of the first things I would do as a county commission chair is put, is work with the legal department to put forward an ordinance, probably modeling it. You know, there's no sense to reinvent the wheel. We should model it on what cities like Doraville, Parkston, City of Atlanta, Park County and other places have. And simply get that in place because our state certainly is not going to be acting on something like that anytime soon.
Thank you, Kurt. Next, we will hear from Lee Thompson.
Thank you. I would agree that Gwinnett County needs to put a non-discrimination ordinance into place. And it needs to provide wide protection for all areas of discrimination. That being said, as lawyers, we, we know that there are some issues. Putting it into effect has a great effect upon the county and we should do that, we should make sure that the county enforces that. It would be much more effective from a state level. Unfortunately, I believe that, that those who are in power in the state right now are not inclined to do that. And we need to put pressure on them to have a statewide anti-discrimination laws. So that we don't have to leave it up to the counties and the cities. But that failing, we actually need to step in and we need to model an ordinance after some of the other cities that have such an ordinance. And make sure that it is not only passed, but that then it is effectively communicated to the community and effectively enforced within the community.
Next, we will hear from Nicole.
Absolutely. I agree with what's been said and I echo both Kurt and Lee and that we absolutely need a civil rights and non-discrimination ordinance at the county level. And that's one thing that I did advocate for when I was with the county. We need to examine the, the policies, the practices, our service delivery model internally and look at it with an equity lens. And that's something that has not been done for a long time and I don't think it's ever been done. But even going beyond that, we need to institute a civil rights division or a division that is going to ensure compliance. That is going to ensure that we're being proactive about removing barriers and ensuring that internally our employees are equipped with understanding how to enact measures that are protecting our, our citizens who are, represent all of the different ethnic areas, LGBTQ, you know, religion and all of the rights that are protected under the law.
Thank you, Nicole. And finally, we will hear from Andy Morgan.
I agree as well. And so we're, we're all in agreement on this issue. My perspective basically is obviously we are approaching nearly a million people. We're going to be the largest by population county in the state of Georgia. We are extremely diverse in both race, ethnicity, gender, culture. So it's important we recognize that diversity, recognize we're going to do everything that's necessary to protect and enforce rights across the board. So I, I agree wholeheartedly that we need to ensure the protection of our rights for our citizens and everyone is treated fairly and equitably. And if doing so involves passing civil rights legislation at the county level, then I'm totally for it.
Thank you, Andy. So for our next question, we will go to a topic that we've all heard quite a bit about the last few years here in Gwinnett County, which is immigration. Immigration has been a hot topic in this county last year, last few years, particularly because of the debate over 287G. There has been a lot said about the commissions involved in that program and how much influence it has over the sheriff's offices ability to participate in that program. Given the nature of sheriff's offices in Georgia, I know there is limited amount of influence the commission can have over the sheriff. Why don't he participates in that program? But the question here is, what would you do to address the growing concern over 287G? And what would you do to ensure that all immigrants feel welcomed here in Gwinnett County? And we will start with Kurt Thompson. And again, everybody will have two minutes on this question.
So, thanks. I mean, for starters, plain and simple, I'm against 287G. And the best thing that we can be doing is to elect a new sheriff that will end that program. It's just that, that's the plain, simple, quickest, easiest way to deal with that. Barring that, you know, I do think that the county commission needs to look at putting budget restrictions. Counties, cities, states, the federal government, they earmark budgets all the time saying what you can and cannot spend money on. And I think the county is well within its right to say you can't spend county tax dollars or use county personnel to enforce that. You'll have to go get that money and that personnel elsewhere. You can't necessarily stop the sheriff from being a part of that program. But you can certainly make him or her, there's only male candidates right now in this current election, but make the next sheriff, go find that money and those personnel elsewhere. I had the privilege of representing not just the most diverse district in the state and the state senate, but the third most diverse state senate seat in the country. One thing that I think Gwinnett has to do, especially as we're starting to try and restart the economy, is to figure out how to embrace that diversity, not run from it. How we're going to have to work within those, that international and immigrant community to restart our small business network because that is the backbone of our community. And so I think somehow getting out and embracing that diversity and making it be our biggest asset and our biggest marketing tool will be the best way to bring back our local economy or our best way to make immigrants feel welcome. You know, above and beyond getting rid of 287G, which was the, was the basic question.
Thank you, Kurt. And next we will hear from Lee Thompson.
I also am opposed to 287G and that program. And in fact, I posted something on my Facebook page that you can go and read that was posted last August, I believe it was, when we were having some county hearings about this matter. And it was, was in the press at that time. The program is bad for a number of reasons. Number one, it's a bad economic program. It costs the county about $3 million a year and we don't get any really, real return upon that money. It's bad for psychological and socioeconomic reasons. It's discriminatory against our imminent, our immigrant community. It causes the immigrant community to feel threatened and rather than to be including and inclusive for, for that community. And it breaks up families in the manner that it does this and does away with breadwinners for the family. It's just a bad program. We need to do away with it. One good way to do away with it would be to elect a good democratic candidate for sheriff who's opposed to the program. The other thing that we need to do is that we need to embrace the diversity. I agree with Kurt completely on that. We need to embrace the diversity in our community. We need to work on policies that make sure they are inclusive and we need to bring people to the table. And bringing people to the table means more than just bringing them into the room and saying that they're in the room and they have an ability to be there. It means listening to what they say and it means acting on what they bring up as ideas. And we need to continue to do that.
Thank you, Lee. And as we will hear from Nicole.
Thank you. Gwinnett's diversity is our greatest strength and I will never stop fighting to make sure that that is the case. As the division director for Gwinnett County Government, that is exactly what I worked on. I worked on building bridges with our immigrant communities. In fact, I was a member of the first welcoming region in the state of Georgia, the first of its kind to create a welcoming region in the five metro counties here in, in the state to include Gwinnett County and putting measures in place so that immigrant and refugee communities could feel a sense of security here. Immigrants have a right to feel safe where they live. The 287G program only perpetuates profiling. It also diminishes public safety and it diminishes public trust. And as chair, one thing that I would like to do is ensure that we restore public trust in our law enforcement. That's what it should be. But also that we welcome our immigrant and refugee communities here and create that sense of belonging. Because Gwinnett County is a diverse county and this is a county where everyone can feel a part of and be and thrive.
Thank you, Nicole. Next, we will hear from Andy.
I agree that the 287G program should be discontinued. And also the best way to do that would be to elect someone who's going to actually follow through on that. I recognize that the program has a destabilizing effect within our communities. It creates mistrust in the law enforcement authorities in terms of them going in and helping to assist communities that are being affected by these 287G program. And so as, as county commission chair, one of the things that I would probably be focusing on is outreach to those communities. One, to reestablish trust to the extent they know that there is a resource they can reach out to within the county if they need the assistance. And two, to provide support services for families who are, who have been impacted by the effect of the program. This program has the effect of displacing entire families, taking breadwinners out of, out of the families and basically turning them upside down. And so I would, I would be, I would encourage working with local resource agencies, nonprofits, helping support them to support the residents of our community, to let them know that we're here to, to help them. We don't, we're not just in targeting a racial profiling, then we want to make sure there's residents of this county that are taken care of.
Thank you, Andy. And finally, we will hear from Desmond on this question.
Yes, as an immigrant, you know, this is very passionate for me. Just like everyone else, I am totally against a 287G program. As you said, this is a program that is, is up to the sheriff, the new sheriff, whomever he is, to decide whether yes or no he's going to keep the program. I hope that we people go out and vote and vote for someone who they trust, especially someone who will end this program. One of the things I would do is definitely sit with the sheriff to be, or whenever the sheriff is elected, go out into the immigrant community, let the sheriff understand what the immigrant community is about. And this where the immigrant community can also regain some sort of trust in, in the system. Because everyone is scared these days. They lost trust in the system totally. The immigrant community is very important to Gwinnett County because a lot of these small businesses that you see is, is, are being run by, run by immigrants. And they are feel, they felt cheated and felt unwelcome because of what is going on with the 287G program. So one of the things definitely is to go out into the community and meet, sit down with the immigrant community and let them understand. And also the sheriff understand, get a full understand of what is going on and the trust can start to rebuild.
Desmond. And so the next question is, Gwinnett County has been in the national headlines last few years over some of its issues involving elections, including lengthy lines for early voting, absentee ballots being rejected and provisional ballots not being accepted. Given the COVID-19 crisis today, what would you have done to ensure all voters have access to cast their ballots in the 2020 elections? What would you do to increase access to, to voting for future elections? Each of you will have two minutes and we will start with Lee Thompson.
Thank you. Well, I think we've learned from this situation that voting by mail is a good opportunity. And we need to encourage more people to vote by mail. The absentee ballots have been sent out to everyone in this election. And we need to encourage people to send back their absentee ballots to vote by mail. And it would be great if we could, at the state level, get better rules and regulations that would allow people to vote by mail on an easier process than the current process we have. At the county level, we need to make sure that we're properly funding the election board and what they ask for. Unfortunately, this current administration has not been very responsive to asking for increasing early voting, making more satellite positions available and doing the type of funding that needs to be done on that. And as a county commission chair, I would make sure that we do everything we need to do to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to vote, that they have an opportunity to make sure their vote is counted and that we are doing everything we need to in voting to make sure that every vote counts.
Thank you, Lee. And next we will hear from Nicole.
That is a great question. I am pro vote by mail in the current circumstances. I actually have never voted by mail until COVID happened. And so I'm going through this journey just like everybody else. But I, I, I believe in safety and I believe that people should vote in the safest way possible. Research has actually shown that voting by mail increases voter turnout, especially of our people of color and our young people and our seniors and elderly. So I'm a, I'm a full proponent of voting by mail and wanting, and I echo Lee and said, and, and that we should ensure that we're properly funding that process and, and whether it be through postage, whether it be through ensuring that people get access to it and making sure that people have under, clear understanding of the process. And we need to communicate that every step of the way.
Thank you, Nicole. And as we will hear from Andy.
As I mentioned, I've worked for the Board of Elections dealing with the elections process and I feel very strongly about ensuring that our rights to vote are protected. When it comes to voting right now, since we have a situation with COVID, absentee ballots have been sent out. One thing about the fact that the mailing of the absentee ballots is that they were not sent to everyone, they were only sent to active voters. I think we probably should have looked at that process to make sure that maybe some inactive voters should also be given an opportunity to vote as well. As people, as people were expecting to receive those forms. The other thing about the voting process, if we're voting with absentee ballots, I think that the, the county should actually pick up the cost of sending it back. Not everyone is able to go out and buy postage and it shouldn't, and that should not be a deterrent for sending for someone voting by absentee, but by absentee ballot. So I recommend we cover the cost. And also we should have the option somewhere. So for people who, who English is not their primary language, we will get the, get the ballot in a language of their choice, especially when we recognize the diversity of this county. And so if someone cannot get the ballot or gets the And so if someone cannot get the ballot or gets the ballot in English, they should be able to get able to request a ballot that's that's in their native language, they can understand about itself, what the options are and be able to vote effectively. So those are some of the things I'm thinking about as far as how we're being affected by COVID right now. Is probably where most of our poll workers are elderly. And so we have to make sure that if, you know, as we as we do the in person voting, we need to make sure we protect them from from the and provide necessary protective equipment, barriers, masks, whatever is necessary to get them comfortable, to make sure they're protected as far as this process is concerned. I also agree that we need to ensure that there's adequate funding to make sure that we don't have long lines outside for people waiting to vote. That's also deterrent. I know the county has occasionally put on the website the times, the wait times for voting. But I think that we need, we need adequate investment in that process. Lastly, I think we need to have adequate translators in communities where we know that English is not the primary language. And so we need to recruit effectively in order to ensure that people can feel comfortable when they go into the voting and go into the go into vote, they can, they can ask questions in their language and understand what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And next we will hear from Desmond.
Yes, myself also totally support vote by mail. You know, I've heard a lot of people have concern about it if it's going to get lost, which we all know it is possible from previous elections voting Gwinnett and other parts of the country. But I do support voting by mail. It's very important, especially at a time like this, just for 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 people's health. It is important for voter turnout. It is, it is even better for us Democrats. One of the thing that I would do for future elections is to make sure that Sunday voting is something that is is on the table, not just for one Sunday or two Sunday, but throughout the period. We should make sure that Sunday voting is there to stay. Also, funding the electoral election board is a must. That's something that should be looked into to make sure adequate funding is there. One shouldn't have to worry about a postage when they're going to vote by mail, because I've heard people talk about that myself. You know, it should be something that a postage is already prepaid for. So I do support a vote by mail.
Thank you, Desmond. And finally, we will hear from Kurt on this.
Sure, you know, if I if I'd been, I I do feel that vote by mail obviously has to be the way to deal with this in COVID. You know, I'm I'm glad the Secretary of State mailed out all those absentee ballot applications. I do think that it would have been better to have mailed them out to active and inactive voters. That's certainly a better way to find out whether those inactive voters are there than to arbitrarily purge them the way it's happening now instead. And I do absolutely think that they should have included postage on the return ballot so that you don't have to, so that you don't end up basically with a poll tax, not just once for the ballot application, but also twice when you actually cast the ballot, you're having to pay that poll tax twice. And I hope that by the time we get to the November election, that they will address that and do that differently. At the county level, it's pretty much about access to voting and access to voting rights. I want to make sure that we, you know, when I'm County Commission Chair, I want to make sure that we expand access to early voting, expand the hours of early voting and the days of early voting, including Sundays, including weekends, but including extra hours because so many of us spend time in traffic. The getting home by seven before the ballot, before the these places close is sometimes hard. I would want to require more multi language ballot access, not just Spanish and English that are basically mandated by federal law because the minimums, but the 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 minimum shouldn't be the maximum here. We're the most diverse county in the southeast. And I think that we should be protecting democracy by encouraging people regardless of their community to have access to that right to vote. And, you know, you had spoken, Kurt, about the the problems in the two thousand eighteen elections with absentee and provisional ballots. I would instruct our staff and our Board of Elections to make sure that we use the broadest possible interpretation of the law when accepting absentee ballot applications and when accepting provisional ballots so that we're not ground zero of another debacle like the Stacey Abrams kid situation where we're court case after court case after court case. We have to make sure that every vote counts. Public safety and ensuring democracy are the two most important things we do and we better do those well.
Thank you, Kurt. And we'll now move on to our next question. This one is about how affordable housing in Gwinnett County offers seeing median or mean rents of a thousand dollars or more in Gwinnett County, as well as the prevalence of people living in extended stays in Gwinnett County. That's been a particular issue in places like Norcross. How would you make Gwinnett more affordable and make sure that Gwinnett residents have access to affordable housing if you are elected chairman? Each of you will have two minutes to respond and we will begin with Nicole.
That is a great question. And Gwinnett County, the housing costs have risen because construction costs have have increased. And I'm of the mindset that everybody deserves to have decent access to housing that they can afford and it should be in safe areas. I think the way that we do that is to first take a stock of what the inventory is. Well, first and foremost, let's back up and say that when we look at the cost burden, people who cannot afford housing is because they're spending thirty percent of their income on housing or they're spending more than fifty percent of their income on housing. And so we have to look at how we could increase the wealth of these individuals, but also look at how we can place them in areas that they can afford safe and decent housing. And I will look at the model in Norcross, there's a live Norcross model where they worked in on a public private partnership to involve the Housing Authority, Gwinnett County, the the University of Georgia and several partners to come together to look at the extended stays in that area, which is they have, they have several low income families that are using extended stays as their housing because they cannot afford to buy a house, they cannot afford to live in an apartment because they have high eviction rates. So they can't afford that what it what it takes to put a down payment plus two months rent. And so looking at put it pulling together a public private partnership to invest in bringing people out of those circumstances by increasing wealth, looking at the inventory, creating operating, creating affordable housing opportunities through these mixed use developments and livable communities. And we've seen that happen in the city of Norcross and I think that we can use that as a model moving forward.
You, Nicole. And as we will hear from Andy on this one.
Affordable housing is at a crisis level in Gwinnett County. And I think we need to be more creative in terms of how we approach approach the situation. I agree that what's happening right now is because the cost of construction is going up and also the cost of land. So we have to look at our zoning to see if we could probably put more houses on fewer of smaller lots. I know some people are not in favor of that, but if we wanted in order to address the situation, how do we reduce the cost itself? We also have to use the block grants that we get and working with our 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 partners, such as Habitat for Humanity and also the Lawrenceville Housing Authority, working with them to structure transactions in a way where we can use the block grants we're getting from federal government to leverage that resource and provide more housing. There are also other constructive ways you can get involved, including using the TAD funding, using some of the tax benefits that we can provide to developers to maybe offset those construction costs and then passing on the benefit of the of that of those costs to reduce the cost of the purchase price of the house. We could also consider maybe putting a second second lien on properties where we've reduced the cost of the purchase of property by putting a little lien on the property that could either be paid off over time or forgiven depending on how we structure this. So I think we need to be creative. This is an issue that's affecting the country as a whole. But there are ways to address it, including affordable housing tax credits that we can use, we can do this. But but my view is I'm optimistic. We just need to sit down and and work together collectively as public private partnerships in order to provide ways to incentivize construction of affordable housing.
Thank you, Andy. And next we will hear from Desmond on this one.
Yes. When I moved here from New Jersey in two thousand eight, I got a two bedroom apartment in Duluth. And that was four hundred and eighty dollars, four hundred and eighty. I did not believe it until I signed that lease. But over the years, you know, Gwinnett has grown so much, so you, the demand is very high. And I think they took advantage of that and rents starting to go up, property property costs starting to go up. And a lot of people are working and they can't afford it, even though they're working because it's beyond their 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 checkbook. One of the thing I like, of course, we all agree, Norcross is is what Norcross did. Another thing I noticed was what the city of Gainesville did. What I would love to do is to, you know, approach what they did in Norcross, also what they did in in Gainesville and sit down, not but what the private sector and 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 other developers to see how best we can create housing that people can afford and in what area. So it can be done, but it's going to take a lot of work. And with that, it has to be done as a team.
Thank you, Desmond. And as we were here from Kurt Thompson on this one.
So I actually serve on the, so I actually serve on the Lit Norcross Committee. And I don't just show up to the occasional meeting, I've actually gone out into the extended stays and into the some of the lower end apartment complexes in the area, doing some of those surveys to find out what are the barriers to housing that people have. And and so I'm well aware of what's going on and the and the problems and how they need to be addressed because I've been a part of that process in Norcross. I do think that, you know, one of the things at the county level is simply having a a land use plan that focuses on on affordable housing and then follow that plan. I think everything has to be on the table from an emphasis on mixed use development and going to high rises because that can deal with the issue of land cost and cost of construction because sometimes growing vertical is the only way to deal with that. Up to allowing grandparent or in law housing on some homes on some areas with larger lots so that people can age in place with their families to even allowing allowing things like tiny houses in places where that's appropriate. Everything has to be on the table. And we have to look at a at basically a comprehensive strategy for doing that. I think it should include things like tax allocation districts and tax increment financing districts and other creative ways of financing so that we can target areas that need to be redeveloped so that we can get rid of substandard housing without necessarily gentrifying and and forcing people out of their homes, but provide quality affordable housing and workforce housing for people so that people can have good housing, so that seniors can age in place and can downsize when when they get to the point where they want to. My own son you know, should be able to afford to buy his home, first home in Gwinnett County, just like I could and currently couldn't. And we need to change that. It's that simple.
Thank you, Kurt. And finally, we will hear from Lee Thompson on this one.
Thank you. Affordable housing is an issue that we have to deal with in multiple ways. And I agree with some of the comments that have been made. There are some good examples of ways we need to start dealing with affordable housing. One of those is the organization that's been established by the Larchville Housing Authority. They've done some excellent projects where they've been doing a mix of all types of housing. And that's an excellent thing that we need to do in the community. And we can use the resources. We have a housing authority and we don't use the housing authority in Gwinnett County a lot of times, other than just to issue bonds. And we need to use that to actually do some creative projects that provide good quality housing for all individuals. We need to make sure that I read that we have the appropriate land use policies in effect. When we have good land use policies, then we can affect where affordable housing goes. Because when we put affordable housing in, we also need to make sure that there's good transportation near affordable housing so that that workforce housing allows those people who are living in the housing to get to their jobs and to be able to easily get to the areas where they're working and to the areas that are providing their livelihoods. And we also need to make sure that we do have public private partnerships. As we have people that want to come in and redevelop areas, it's a good way to get rid of some of our dilapidated housing, some of our areas that are blighted. We need to do that, but we need to make sure we're not pushing people out of their housing when they do that. Larchville recently redeveloped their downtown and they used it to replace some of their fifty and sixty year old housing that was in that area and they replaced it with brand new housing and moved the same people into that housing. If we're creative, we can come up with a lot of good solutions for this.
Thank you, Lee. And for the next topic, we're going to go to the the subject we all knew was probably going to come up at some point tonight. And that is the transit referendum. Gwinnett County commissioners have been talking about putting a referendum on the November ballot, but they haven't committed to doing that just yet. Do you support a transit referendum appearing on this November's ballot? And if the referendum is not placed on this ballot, would you commit to putting it on the referendum, the referendum on the November twenty twenty two ballot, which is the next November's inter election ballot that we would have in Gwinnett County? This is a two minute each response and we will start with Andy.
Yes, and yes. Basically, Gwinnett County, Gwinnett County has been in need of a quality transportation for a number of years. And so if it does not come on the ballot this time around, I would do everything possible as Gwinnett County Commission Chair to review that proposal and make sure it gets on the next ballot that we're going to have a significant turnout, that people can actually come out and voice their views and perception of as far as what can be done with with transit. It's as far as I'm concerned, transit is is both an empowerment vehicle to get people to places of employment, to places to to find work as well as finding places for healthcare and education as well as mobility and an economic driver. So I am highly in favor of transit as long as it's 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 accessible and as long as it's reliable. So we can address some of the congestion issues we have in this county and provide mobility for folks who can't get around. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And next we will hear from Desmond.
Yes, I do support it. And if it's not on there, definitely we'll put it on the twenty and on the next one coming up in twenty twenty two. Transit transit is extremely important, you know, in any county, any part of the country that you're going to go. Because as we can see in Gwinnett, it's so congested. We need proper transit, transportation, not just for eighty for the eighty five corridor, but for the entire county we need to cover. So I would definitely, I definitely support it now. And I I would definitely support it on the 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 next referendum, two years from now, if it if it doesn't make it in the November ballots. Thank you.
Thank you, Desmond. And that's what we hear from Kurt on this one.
At least the first of us are all in agreement, yes and yes. You know, I would support it if it comes up, you know, it's not a perfect plan, but it's but the only perfect plan is is the one that you develop and and so I would definitely support this. If it's not on the ballot, I would say that the County Commission has to make that priority one other than safely get after safely getting through the COVID crisis and working to restart the economy. And honestly, having a transit plan on the and a referendum that passes and implementing it will be part of restarting the economy. It's a huge infrastructure project that we will need if we're going to have a successful restart of this economy. I do think that if we do end up having to move it to the twenty twenty two ballot, we should look at the plan that that's being looked at now and consider amending it. I personally think that we need to emphasize light rail and bus rapid transit over a heavy rail because you get basically more bang for your buck and you're able to then expand transit options, especially in South Gwinnett because which was neglected in the last referendum because, you know, to be honest, one of the things you've got to do is you've got to have a plan that will pass. And so you've got to have a plan that's a good plan, that's good for the county, but that can get fifty percent plus one percent of the vote. And I think that we have to take a look at that going forward. And if if it comes on our watch, that we have to put it on the twenty twenty two ballot, shifting some of it to light rail and bus rapid transit so we can expand options in South Gwinnett and on the seventy eight corridor and one twenty four quarter are incredibly important. And so that's what I would say, but it's a priority, absolutely.
Thank you, Kurt. And that's what we hear from Lee on this one.
Yes, I would hope that the County Commission this year would place the transit referendum on the ballot. I think we need to do that. The plan that we have may not be perfect. But the most important thing is that we get a plan passed and that we get a guaranteed funding source in place. We have suffered in this county because we haven't had a guaranteed funding source in place. And it's unfortunate that the last referendum was put off from the November ballot until the March ballot, which I think was done for purely partisan politics. And and that's unfortunate because I think it would have passed on the November ballot. And I would encourage them to put it on this November ballot. If it's not placed on that November ballot, I would make it a high priority in the next administration to have that referendum as soon as possible. And I think that would be the twenty two election, although we may be also facing some other referendums on that same ballot. Uh, although we may be also facing some other referendums on that same ballot, uh, which is going to be a, a complicating factor. And there's another reason that we should put it on this year's ballot. Um, I would uh encourage us to come up with a plan, uh, get that plan approved. And go forward with transit because not having a, a good transit plan has held us back for a number of years and we need to correct that situation as quickly as possible.
Lee, and finally, we'll hear from Nicole on this question.
Yes, and my response is yes and a resounding yes. Uh, we have an obligation to provide transit options for our residents. Um, and we really can't afford to not have the referendum this November. So I'm urging our leaders now, if you're listening and you're on this call. Please consider putting the referendum on the ballot in November. Um, we have an obligation, as I've mentioned. Uh, there are areas of this county that are not receiving coverage. There are people who can't afford a car and can't get around. There are jobs that are, there are industries that are not coming to this county because we don't have an active and robust transit system. And so it's, it's, it's imperative that we invest in, in, in the transit options and get that referendum on the November ballot. Um, I support the referendum. I voted in favor of it in March. I will vote in favor of it again if it's put on the November. If it's not, I will vote. To put that in twenty twenty-two. Um, this is more than, than just addressing, addressing the traffic issue. We've learned from COVID that. Uh, we may have, uh, have, have, have to think differently and futuristically about how we address uh traffic. In terms of telecommuting and incentivizing telecommuting. But in the meantime, we still need to provide options for people who cannot get around, who cannot get to jobs, who cannot get to doctor's appointments, who cannot. Get who kids who cannot get to after-school programming uh and, and educational opportunities. So it, it's, it's imperative that we take bold steps to. Uh, uh, put a referendum on the ballot and move forward with the plan that is put in place.
Thank you, Nicole. And we'll have one more question before we go to closing uh statements. This question is about. Uh, inclusion of minority voices in the upper levels of Gwinnett County government. We've heard in recent years about some of the incidents racing involving uh. Racial issues in Gwinnett County. Uh, I think we all know what those issues have been. But one of the issues that I've heard is people saying that. Some of these issues may not have happened if there had been uh more. Voices for minorities in the upper levels of Gwinnett County government. We're talking some of the decision makers here, uh, among staff and people who are in positions to influence decisions. Um, among staff. What would you do to increase the presence of minority voices? Voices from people of color in the upper levels of Gwinnett County government if you're elected. Chairman. And we will start with Desmond on this question.
Oh, yes. Yes. Um, one of my main platform point is to make sure that we have a very inclusive government in Gwinnett County. For a county that's diverse, we want to make sure that everyone is represented. Um. But you want, you, we want to have people. In government that can relate to everyone else, that can give people comfort whenever they come to our county government for anything whatsoever. Um. We just don't want anyone, but we want people who are qualified. Whether, you know, whether it's African-American community, the, the Hispanic community. It doesn't, Asian community, doesn't matter. But we need to make sure that people can feel comfortable. They can relate to, 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 um. To whomever they're, they're talking, dealing with in, in county government. Because it gives some, some sort of comfort whenever, whenever they're, whenever they have to address any issues. So I definitely, definitely, definitely will make sure that we have a government that is more inclusive. And when that is the case, we will see productivity within this county. Uh, go forward even better than what it is right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Desmond. And as we hear from Kurt on this one.
Well, I have made that a priority in my platform, embracing the diversity of this county. If, if we are the most diverse county in the southeast, our county workforce should look like that. Uh, the folks that we do business with, who we contract and subcontract should look like the most diverse set of businesses in the southeast. And, you know, as county commission chair, it's your job to lead on that issue. It's just that simple. We've got a situation now where, you know, basically if you go into an entry level. Office, if you, if you walk in the front door of any of the county offices. You know, you sort of see something that looks like Gwinnett County. And the moment you ask for a supervisor, it looks like nineteen eighty-four in Gwinnett County. I know because I was here then. And, um, and that's got to change, but that leadership comes from the top. It's, it's with every board appointment you make, every commission appointment you make as a county chair. It's working with the county administrator where there's the current one or a future one and the, and the HR department. To make sure it's a priority that we have that diversity in our department heads and our assistant department heads so that that trickles down. Um, because it won't happen otherwise. And then I think we have to look at how we do our procurement and our contracting and subcontracting. To make sure that, that, that too reflects our diversity so that anyone can, um, you know, from Gwinnett County can also do business with Gwinnett County. So that we make it a point uh that our contract, you know, if you take a picture of all the contractors that work with Gwinnett County, that it looks like Gwinnett County also. Um, but basically that takes priority and prioritizing it and leadership and uh making those appointments. Uh, as they come up and probably changing some things about how we do our contracting and subcontracting at the county level. And our bid. And you have to go out and recruit. That's the other thing. You can't just sit and wait thinking, well, no one's coming. You've got to go out and, and recruit in those minority communities and in those international communities to make it happen.
Thank you, Kurt. And as we hear from Lee on this one.
Well, I think the question brings up something that is, is definitely a problem within our county. Uh, we need to have more diverse leadership uh at the higher levels uh of the county. And in order to do that, uh, it does start at the top. It's going to have to take the attitude of the fact that we want to have an inclusive and a diverse. Uh, government and a governmental structure. Uh, you do that uh in a couple of ways. You do it, number one, by actually recruiting and you would talk to somebody. Uh, like Francis Davis, who I worked with uh for years at the Gwinnett County School System. Uh, and you create programs where you go out and actually recruit. In diverse communities, uh, seeking applicants for uh the positions that you're looking for. You also create leadership programs within. If you have a, a leadership program uh to help develop your lower level employees so that they can move into leadership positions and move into. That increase the diversity as you uh build from within uh on employees that you already have. Uh, and you need to do that in order to uh build that diversity. Uh, both from outside by recruiting and from inside by training people and building leadership skills within the good employees that you already have. Uh, we also uh need to uh make sure that when we're doing this. Uh, that once again, we are being inclusive in uh all areas, including how we put out our contracts. Uh, anybody who's been involved in government much has heard about bids and uh RFPs or requests for uh proposals. And uh, anybody knows that if you write those the right way, uh, you can pretty much get who you want to uh to, to be the person that's chosen. We need to make sure from the top that when we start writing those bids and those proposals, that we make sure that we're looking for the widest range. Of people who can answer those bids and, and get those jobs.
Thank you, Lee. And as we hear from Nicole on this one.
Thank you. That's a great question. And I was hired by the county to focus on our diversity and inclusion. So I know a lot about this topic and. Yes, I did uh witness and experience the disparities between uh the leadership and what they look like in the communities that they serve. Uh, the only racial and ethnic minorities that serve as top directors in the, in the leadership positions run the jail and run our IT department. So they run our correct, I'm sorry, they run our corrections department and our IT department. Um, and, and so that, having those conversations at that level and pushing for inclusion and diversity was, was one of my main premises. And, and why I, I, a lot, large portion of why I was hired with the county is to ensure that we were being reflective in our processes. But I think this also brings up a very fundamental issue about our core values. And we need to institute core values that state that we value diversity, equity, opportunity for all of our citizens. And that needs to be emphasized in our mission, our values and how we conduct business. And I think the rest will just trickle down.
Thank you, Nicole. And finally, we'll hear from Andy on this one.
I think that clearly our county should reflect the diversity, uh, that our county staff should reflect the diversity of the county as a whole. Across all levels, including senior positions. And I think it's going to come through uh not just messaging from the leadership, but also establishing procedures, putting things in place to ensure that we can. Uh, and, and sure we get diverse applicants coming into the application pool who we can choose from. The other thing is that I think we have to have diverse hiring practices uh based on where we, where we recruit. Um, as far as ensuring a, a good career path internally, you have to focus on training for those who are, who are within the county, county staff positions. So they understand what's required or to move up to the next level. We just have to have clear paths for folks to understand what's required to go to the next step so they can have a career path going forward. So you know what can, what they can do in order to move forward and, and move along uh through the, through the county, county runs of, of development. Uh, so clear promotion plans, paths as well as mentorship. Um, we need to be able to ensure that we have, we're mentoring our young people who are coming in. So they know what, what opportunities are available and, uh, and get some guidance in terms of moving forward. And we also have to mentor our senior, senior staff as well. In terms of letting them understand what we expect of them in terms of providing a diverse environment, an environment that's inclusive. Where, where everyone feels that they, they could be involved in the process and, uh, and feel engaged and feel that they're, they're valued. A member of, of the community in terms of what we provide and service to provide. As far as we talk about uh the bidding process, I think you also have to have some training there as well. Uh, we need to ensure that those who, uh, who want to participate have an opportunity to learn how we, how we do our bidding process and learn what's necessary in order to be able to participate on even. A level playing field so they can get an opportunity to, to be involved. Thank you.
Andy, and now we will move to our closing uh remarks from each of our candidates. For this one, we, each candidate will have one minute to give their closing remarks. And we will start with Kurt Thompson on this one.
Again, thanks for letting me be here on, giving, having this opportunity uh to speak to folks. You know, I've spent my entire life in Gwinnett County. I've spent my entire adult life fighting for folks in Gwinnett County to make sure that we have the economic opportunity. And um, and that we have a place to grow, to make sure that Gwinnett County can be that city on a hill that people often talk about trying to become. Um, I've served sixteen years in the legislature. I'm the only person here with a lot of experience actually writing government budgets, having. Uh, served on appropriations. I've served on the Rules Committee. I've worked on CIDs and headed up CIDs. Um, I certainly have, I believe, the experience and the talent. And the skills necessary to do this job and do it well. And if you honor me with your vote on Election Day. I promise you, I will fight for you every day in Lawrenceville, just as I fought for you every day in Atlanta in the General Assembly. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. And as we hear from Lee.
Thank you. Once again, thank you to our host for uh providing this forum for us to be here tonight. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity. Uh, as I said at the beginning, uh, I had reasons for running for this job. And those reasons still stand. I believe that I have the qualifications and the experience to do this job. I believe my work as a local government attorney for almost forty years, a state representative. Uh, and as a community leader, uh, give me the ability to uh make the decisions that need to be made as the county commission chairman. And actually provide me unique qualifications among the people that are running uh for this position. I asked for your vote. And if I receive your vote, I believe that the best days are ahead of Gwinnett and that we can do great things together if we will. Uh, simply work together and uh embrace our diversity and go forward with great ideas for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. And we will hear from Nicole now.
Thank you again for this opportunity, Asian Americans Advancing Justice. Again, my name is Nicole Hendrickson and I am running to be the next Gwinnett County Commission Chairman. We are not the same Gwinnett County that we were a decade ago. We are changing rapidly and as such, the face of leadership needs to change. In fact, it should reflect the diversity of our great county. I am running for office because I feel that I can best serve the voice and values of this county and in this community. Elections are about choices and there is no clearer choice. And I humbly ask for your vote and vote for somebody who has the vision, who has the demonstrated ability to get things done. And will serve the people of this community like I have been doing for the past several years in this county. So I ask for your vote. Follow me on social media and Twitter, Love for Gwinnett, uh, Instagram, Facebook and Twitter, and I would love to have your vote.
Thank you, Nicole. And as we hear from Andy.
If you believe in the importance of a county government that is representative of all residents, I'm asking for your vote. You believe that we need to implement a reliable transit and transportation plan to provide for increased mobility, alleviate traffic congestion and drive economic growth? I'm asking for your vote. If you believe in the importance of addressing poverty in our communities by providing job training and other support services, incentivizing entrepreneurship. Attracting employers that are willing to pay a level wage, I'm asking for your vote. If you believe in the importance of developing a comprehensive plan to address not just homelessness, but it's, but also the root causes. Then I'm asking for your vote. My name is Andy Morgan. I'm not a politician. I'm a citizen just like you who believes in the future of this county, who is committed to making a positive difference. And I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And finally, we're here from Desmond.
Yes, um, unlike, unlike my opponents, what separates me is that I am a businessman. I came to Gwinnett County uh twelve years ago and I came with a vision. I started a restaurant in the, in the middle of a recession. A lot say I couldn't do it. And I'm here twelve years later, doing it and expanding. Again, we face with another economic issue, an economic downfall, a pandemic right now. And I have not closed my restaurant to date. I continue to serve my community. And with this kind of attitude, I, I intend to serve Gwinnett County. You want someone who can deal with issues during hard times and good times. You want someone who can be there for you, for the county overall throughout all the times, whether it's good or bad. And for that reason, I am running and I'm asking you for your vote to be your next county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Desmond. And I want to thank all of our candidates for participating in this forum tonight. And a great opportunity for the, the voters of Gwinnett County, particularly the Democratic voters, to hear from the candidates. Rent be the next commission chairman. And before I turn this back over to Aisha, I just want to remind everybody that if you have not yet uh received your application. For an absentee ballot or if you lost it, you can visit mvp dot s o s dot g a dot gov. And through that website, which is the My Voter Page website, you can actually download, print out an application for an absentee ballot. You might want to send it in quickly because I have been getting a lot of applications in Gwinnett County. So you might want to get it in quickly so they have time to process it and get it back to you. So you can then fill out your ballot and send it back before June ninth. And with that, I will turn it back over to Aisha.
Thank you so much, Kurt, and to all of our candidates for being part of this important event tonight. As we've heard here, there are many important issues to be decided for the future of Gwinnett County in the upcoming years. And we need to elect bold, progressive leadership to help us get there. With your vote, you decide who will be the next chairman of the Gwinnett County Board of Commissioners. On June ninth, you will have the opportunity to cast your ballot for candidates in the primaries with a potential runoff in August. Now, before we close out, I want to remind our participants watching at home that our voices need to be heard during elections, but especially after elections when we need to hold our elected leaders accountable. We as a community must do the work to hold our leaders accountable for the decisions they make or the decisions they refuse to make. I want to take a minute to acknowledge the brutal killing of Ahmad Arbury in Brunswick, Georgia. I encourage each of you to make a phone call to the Liberty County District Attorney's Office and demand that justice be served. I'd also like to encourage those who are able to attend a protest being organized tomorrow by the Georgia NAACP at the Glynn County Courthouse at ten AM. We will post the details in the comments below and we encourage you to show up. Thank you once again for joining us for this important forum. Don't forget to request your vote from home ballot, as Kurt just mentioned. And get your request in as soon as possible to make sure you can get your ballot in time. and get your request in as soon as possible to make sure you can get your ballot in time. I hope you all have a great night and be sure to like our page for more updates about our work. Thank you again to our partners and thank you all for tuning in at home. Have a great night.